I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February 20th. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Tensing, and Paula Cole. I am Christine Malik, the Chair, and we also have Superintendent Junowski. Our student representative, Matthew Kifflie, was not able to attend tonight. So I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. We will start with review and approval of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
Yeah, well, second motion.
We have a motion by, I'm sorry, by Mrs. Brockie, and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. So we will move, we have no request for public comment today, so we will move on to reports and information from school sources and the superintendent update.
Alright, so we have reached beyond the halfway point. Actually, today was the 100th day celebration in multiple of our elementary schools, and so that is obviously significantly past the halfway point. Halfway point at the high school is at the end of the semester, and so that happened at the end of January, and at the request of the school board. Our high school is here this evening to share some updates on the high school transformation, some updates on the seven-period day, and some updates on some of the things that have been going on in our high school, including where things stand as of the halfway mark in our first year at six hours and 50 minutes in a seven-period day. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to our esteemed principal, Latonya Daniels.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we stand before you this evening to give you an update on the high school transformation thus far through first semester. And so, the purpose of the high school transformation overall was just to improve achievement for students, also to provide equitable opportunities for the different demographics of students that we serve, as well as to just make Richfield High School overall a much more competitive high school, serving the needs of our community. So, in transforming the high school, last spring, we made a very bold, I would like to say a super-bold, decision to expose every one of our ninth graders to Advanced Placement Human Geography, not just for our honors students, not just for the students who felt like, you know what, they could challenge themselves in the class, but for all students, students who are IEPs, students with different disabilities. We wanted to set a precedent in the ninth grade and inform all students that they were more than capable of achieving at high levels, and we wanted to expose them to that experience in the ninth grade. It was a very bold initiative. It's an initiative in which we still stand by today, and we wanted all students to take advantage of this opportunity because as they matriculate through high school, we wanted them to have the experience knowing that they have been exposed and successful in an Advanced Placement class and would feel okay and comfortable pursuing different challenging courses during their high school trajectory. So in doing that, we didn't do, we didn't make that decision without, you know, calculating what supports our teachers would need and what supports our students would need. So for students, we offered seminar courses. We pushed in a reading teacher in several sections of our Advanced Placement Human Geography course to make sure that our students who were struggling readers had literacy support during their class period. Also, the same thing for special ed. We pushed in special ed teachers into our AP Human Geography courses to make sure that our specialist students were properly supported, and we accessed different resources with AP to provide our students the opportunity to prepare for the AP exam at the conclusion of the school year. For the teacher support, a lot of support has been provided to teachers. The support started last spring when we rolled out this new idea. They have had time planning with our instructional coach and Megan, who's here, and also our literacy director, Tia Soon, to be Dr. Tia Clayson. We also sent our teachers to training, and there has been weekly professional development meetings with our teachers teaching this course throughout the fall. There's also been support around unit writing, again, meeting in POCs weekly, and ongoing instructional coaching and support. So these are the results. As you see, we have about 85% of our students who passed the class with an A through a D. We also have 13 students who are on IEPs who passed the class with a P. Looking at this data, I'm going to go to the next slide. Looking at the distribution of our data by ethnicity, again, you see what, how our students land, the different demographics, and as I look at this, I see that, yes, we had 85% of our students to pass with a D or higher, and if we include those students who received a P, that increases that percentage, but I do see that the work lies in us moving more of our students of color who landed in the D and the F zones to Cs or higher. So that is our work for the second semester. But overall, we're very proud of this initiative, and when we looked at our semester one, looked at semester two, human geography scores or actually grades from last year, it was pretty similar. We had 30 students to receive a D, and we had, I'm blanking on the percentage of students who received an F, but it's pretty comparative. I can get you the numbers as the rest of my team presents their slides. But this is the great distribution by ethnicity to date.
Good evening. I'm Megan Stetcher. I'm the instructional coach at the high school, and I work really closely with the AP Human Geography teachers, as well as Director Tia, Director of Literacy, Tia Clayson, to support our teachers. So I wanted to go over how our AP Human Geography seminar courses have been going. Out of the 260 students enrolled in AP Human Geography, 47 are enrolled in the AP Human Geography seminar course, and out of those 47 students, 45 ended up earning credit for semester one, and you can see the grade distribution breakdown on the screen. So we were really happy with the seminar results from first semester. One of the supports that Principal Daniels alluded to was the Early College Reading Seminar Course. This course was originally designed to provide students literacy skills needed and to succeed in literacy-based college-level courses. So we designed it using AP Human Geography curriculum as the vehicle to deliver college-level literacy skills. So students do all sorts of things. They look at how to note-take using the AP Human Geography textbook. They do test prep for the multiple-choice test. They look at how to write in AP Human Geography. So out of the 60 students enrolled in the Early College Reading Seminar, 52 ended up earning credit. And one thing to note is, for the students in the AP Human Geography Seminar, these students self-selected into this seminar support, and then these 60 students were placed in, and we looked at test scores to identify the academic middle. And then you can also see the grade distribution for our Early College Reading Seminar students. And then, for the 21 students who ended up failing first semester AP Human Geography, Ms. Clayson and I have been working very closely to create a individualized credit recovery plan for each student. So when we introduced AP Human Geography for all, we were lucky enough to get brand-new textbooks with a plethora of new curriculum, and within that is an online account to Pearson for every student, and in there, they have additional assessments, activities, lessons, note-taking. It's pretty much online units for every chapter aligned to the AP Human Geography course. So the plan is to have teachers go through some fail data analysis to determine why students failed. Was it that they needed more time, they didn't have proficiency, was it they were absent? So we'll figure out what they missed and what they need to make up, and then we'll create personalized learning plans for these students using the online resources. And then out of the 24 students who failed, 13 are enrolled in the seminar course, so they will finish this credit recovery plan for first semester within seminar. So, I think I have the data written down. 13, or 18 are in early college, so they'll be able to take some time, especially in the spring, to make that up. Two are in the AP Human Geography seminar, and then two are enrolled in our Accelerated Reading class, which supports AP Human Geography and their regular English course. And then for the eight students who aren't in seminar, we'll be working closely with each of those students to determine how they can make that up on their own. So we have Chromebooks for checkout through the media center. The media center's open before and after school, so we'll figure out what will best help the students make up this credit, so they also have the opportunity to make it up during second semester. And the last thing to note, out of these students who failed, eight of them were English-language learners, and as being a former English-language teacher, I'm going to partner with the AP Human Geography teachers and our ELL staff to embed more language scaffolds and support into second semester curriculum, just so we can better support those students as well.
I'm Carrie Valla. I'm the Assistant Principal at Richfield High School, and I'm here to share with you sort of some of the updates on the seven-period day. The first being, the 17-18 goal was 1,000 seats in rigorous courses, and we've exceeded that goal. We have 1,786 filled seats in rigorous courses for semester one. So this data is CIS, AP, honors, courses with advanced titles. And then we gave you the breakdown by ethnicity as well. We're, of course, looking for proportionality in students enrolled in rigorous courses, so you can see the breakdown of semester one. We still have some opportunity for proportionality for our Latino students, but it is an increase that we're seeing. Looking ahead to where our work is going to be in POCs and work with our teachers, we also broke this down by grade distribution, looking at, are you accessing rigorous courses, and then what does the success look like in them? So, as with any data, there is opportunities and strengths in the data, and this is going to be our work for semester two, is making sure all of our students achieve at the highest level in their AP courses. And we presented to you in the beginning part of the school year about our attendance trends, so I wanted to just give you an update through January. We are seeing still positive trends in attendance. Based on the attendance interventions that we have, we've been putting in place, our student assistance team is incentivizing attendance. We have a school-wide goal of nine or less absences per year, and all of those things, in addition to the later start time, I think are working in our favor for a continued trend in attendance at the high school. And then lastly, I wanted to update you on the goal for increasing student or teacher collaboration time. Megan and I are partnering on this work, so with the master schedule created for our teams to meet during the school day, we're really capitalizing on that teacher collaboration, both for job-embedded PD, so figuring out what the issues are in your classroom and with your students, and then working as a team of individuals with best practices to put in interventions and see how that changes data. So the teams created goals that are aligned to our school improvement goals, and they're benchmarking their progress in POCs towards those. They've met in POC teams and in collaboration teams, and they meet weekly to do this work. And then Megan and I developed a plan for the year that included an assessment of where teams were at, and a goal that we set for teams being high-functioning in two areas of the POC rubric by the end of the school year. So we've provided greater structure and support, I would say, to our POC teams and what that work in POCs teams should look like. So, they've been given professional development on the six-step data teams process. They had a little time to implement and come back with questions, and then we did a deeper dive into the six-step data teams process, which is just a process of looking at data that you have, putting an intervention in place, seeing the results of the intervention, and continuing that cycle forward and forward to continue to increase student achievement. So now, where our teams are at is they're, they have backwards-designed a calendar based on a formative assessment that they are going to bring data to a POC team and analyze, and then they're inviting Megan and I into POCs to help coach and support on specific issues related to content, or curriculum, or achievement, or finding strategies that work for kids. We're really just coming in and supporting our teachers. So where we want to go next, I'll turn over to Megan.
So, we set a goal to have at least one data cycle done by spring break, and that gives Carrie and I time to go into every POC and answer questions and support as needed. And then after that, we're actually, through this process, we've seen so many strengths in different ways within our POCs, professional learning communities. So we would like all of our teachers as POC groups to share out on what strengths that they have, what successes they've had, and really learn from a school, kind of have a school-wide moment where we can learn from each other. And then, from March until the end of the year, we'll probably do one more data cycle where Carrie and I will come in, support, answer questions, and then by the end of the year, we'll kind of do a POC celebration of all of the successes and goals that we've achieved throughout the year.
So in closing, we are not just focused on the transformation of the high school for our students' 9 through 12 experience. We are also looking forward. And so in looking forward, we have partnered with two agencies, entities, to really help our students gain access to college in a very meaningful and efficient and effective way. And those two partners are College Possible. We are currently in year two of our College Possible partnership. College Possible works with first-generation college students. They work with students in their junior year. During their junior year, it's all around the prepping of students to prepare them for the ACT, and then during their senior year is all about the college application process. And they also follow students throughout their college experience. The same thing for Gear Up, Gear Up, Get Ready. They are actually beginning their work in the middle school this school year. They will be coming to the high school during the 2019-20 school year, but we are partnering with them as we are deciding or figuring out who has the social capital in our building to lead college and career readiness work with our students, because we do know we have a counseling department, but we do know that we can have a more robust program or support, provide a more robust level of support and programming around our students actually choosing colleges and getting into colleges. And so Gear Up, Get Ready will be in our building during the 2019-20 school year to help us do that work. Both of these partners were partners of mine in my previous school in Minneapolis, and I'm very fortunate that they sought us out in my time here in Richfield to partner with us to do this work as well. And I apologize for neglecting to have this data ready, but in comparison to semester two of last year's regular and honors geography, we saw 30 Ds and 17 Fs from honors and our regular geo-class, and then we had 16 Fs in our regular geo-class and one in honors. So I wanted to share that information with you all as well. So with that, do you all have any questions for us?
I have a question for Megan, and I think you stated this, but I might have just missed the detail.
Yeah.
Can you just review again your process for enrolling students in the two different support courses you?
Yeah. Yep. So the AP Human Geography seminar is self-selection, so all of our seminar courses, students can self-select in. The Early College course is, our seminar are the academic middle, so we place students into that one. And then we also have accelerated reading classes. It's not a seminar. It's a class that students attend every day, and it's for the bottom 25% on test scores that aren't in special ed. And they, the teacher of that course supports English and AP Human Geography, so it kind of acts as a seminar as well. And then I forgot to mention it, but we also have a special ed seminar course with about 10 students in it that we're hoping to get more in for next year. So I would say about three-fourths of our students in AP Human Geography are receiving some sort of seminar support.
Three-fourths?
Yeah. That's a guess, but I would, yeah, we have a lot of students enrolled in seminar.
Thank you.
Yep.
You mentioned the curriculum was by Pearson.
Mm-hmm.
They have a bad rep for biased curriculum.
Yeah.
As in in teacher testing and all of that.
Yes.
And a lot of the times when I see results that we don't really expect, I'm always curious to know, you know, how did the rollout of the curriculum turn out? Sometimes when you have resources that are not culturally relevant to students, that's going to make it harder for them to do, you know, reading comprehension, or even to gain, you know, their interest. And also, as a teacher, sometimes, well, in Minneapolis, it's basically being a victim of being given curriculum that you don't really have a say in.
Right.
And I appreciate that in Richfield, as far as I know, teachers have more freedom to find the resources based on the standards that they're supposed to teach. So I just want to, you know, in doing the research for the curriculum, if you could give me some information about how that came about?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
And how confident you feel about it?
Yeah, absolutely. So we went through a pretty extensive process last spring with all of our teachers, but especially AP Human Geography. So Tia actually found a teaching tolerance resource that looks at not only text complexity, but also looks at qualitative measures, like biases that you mentioned. So teachers had to go through and do a Lexile survey of what the reading level is at for the book. We went through and looked at biases for, you know, where narratives are absented, or where maybe it's politically leaning one way or the other, especially with a geography curriculum. And we definitely did see some biases within the book. We didn't find one book where there were no biases. We ended up choosing the Pearson book because it was most closely aligned to the AP Human Geography course and exam, and we did know where there were biases, but we're really using them as teachable moments for students to say, hey, this is a bias in the book. What would be the other side? And just provide, kind of give them a moment to realize that everything you read and consume has bias, and being able to detect it as a consumer of literacy. Yep.
I have a couple of questions. On the support course, courses for the, say, the AP Human Geography, so we had the support courses, roughly three-quarters of the students were involved in it, yet, you know, there's still isn't 100% success rate, correct? So do we modify the course? Do we learn from it? Are there things that we're looking at trying to do differently? And especially if you look at the distribution, are there some groups that seem to have had a harder time even with the supports than others? So are we being thoughtful about how we modify supports that target the individuals?
Yeah, absolutely. We're actually meeting this Thursday to talk about how we design our assessments for the course. We've done, we went really heavy on having it aligned to the AP exam at the end of the year, and we actually met with Southwest High School, who also does AP for all, and talked to them about how they design their assessments. So we're going to do a more balanced approach, where we're going to have more projects tied in, do more formative checks throughout, and then scaffold the assessment, so it starts with questions that are a little bit more accessible for all, and then build up to the questions that they'll see on the AP exam. So that's one thing we're doing, just because the summative is such a large part of their grade. But we really need to look at how we're intentionally grouping students throughout class to meet their needs. We need to look at language supports for our ELL students, and because we do have co-teachers, we need to look at how we're utilizing both the teachers to meet the needs of students. So it's, it is year one, and it's, there's, yeah, there'll be a lot of changes probably for the next few years until we can meet the needs of all the students, but the first step is getting our assessments really tight and in place.
If I could keep going.
Yeah.
Did we, just to clarify, we did not change how we measure absences different, like we don't, the same measure of, you know, you're absent, you're absent? Okay. So other than the later start, do we have anything that we would suggest? It's really just the later start, correct?
Later start, and as Carrie talked about, excuse me, incentivizing attendance.
Okay.
Calls are going home for first, so there's a script that first-hour teachers call home and, hey, you noticed you worked in school today? Being that personal connection at the beginning of semesters is something new that we've put in place that treats us leading with our social worker.
And the first week of each semester, administration was very visible at the beginning of the school day to greet and welcome each late student to school, and remind them that we wanted them to, you know, be at school on time and come to school every day. And so that was also an attendance intervention. But besides that, no Tim.
Okay. Third question. We, semester one, we had 1,786 seats in rigorous courses across the group. So semester two has started, are we at a comparable number?
Yes.
We are? Okay.
I'm glad they know.
Yes, that's great. That's great.
Yes, nothing has changed dramatically.
And one of the other, one of the other concerns of the, this is sort of off the path from the rigorous courses, the later start time and later finish, and the impact on after-school activities. You know, there were a few sports that had practice times that were maybe going to be more, under more pressure than others, and so do we have feedback on that, that it went relatively smoothly?
Our numbers were up in the fall, and we ran our numbers for the winter, and they're certainly comparable. I mean, most of the data, you know, not data, but most of the, the biggest issue right now is kids talking about the pressure to get to work. We had practices that used to get done, we could get done by 5 o'clock. Kids can get to work. Now that they're getting done later, it gets tougher to get those evening shifts in. So that's, that's the report I've got for my coaches in terms of that. Has that been a significant drop in numbers? No, but has it had an impact on certain students?
Okay, thank you.
So have we, in kind of tagging along with that, have we looked at the early release times for students in that last hour of school, and if that has had any effect on students' performance in their last hour for, when they were getting pulled out earlier, or missing their last hour for sport?
No, that would be an interesting study in terms of grades and looking at, trying to compare that to our other students. I mean, the reality is, every, every time we pull down, our students, our athletes do better than the general population. So trying to figure out what to compare that to, you know, if you compare that to other athletes, because I said, regardless, I said, you're going to see that those students are doing well. And again, that's it. And the expectation for all of our programs is that in order to be early releases, you have to be doing well in class. And as soon as a teacher says, hey, this student is struggling in tenth period or has missed a lot and needs to stay and get caught up, and they simply don't get early released, and they don't go to those campuses. So our athletes are aware of that expectation. And we've had students that have done that on their own, have just said, I'm getting behind, I was sick, and now, you know, you're asking for early release, I just need to be in class today, and they go with the students.
And that was going to be my next question. How often, or how is, how is it affecting the students? Like, are they feeling the pressure of missing, missing days in class? But you kind of answered that.
Yes, here's a, yes, but I don't think that's new. I mean, there's always been that pressure. I mean, our kids, like you said, are good students, and they understand the students first, and so, you know, there's always that pressure of missing a class. Changes a little, I'm sure as a senior, and you get to the spring, it's probably not such a big deal for some of them, but the reality is, our kids are pretty responsible in terms of that, and so, do they feel stressed? Yes, they say, you know, the same stress when they've got a big test, and they miss class, regardless of anything else. So like I said, we, our coaches are very good about setting up study halls. When we've got later practices that we're using that time in between, that they can get help, they can stay after with their teachers, synchronized, I mean, they just, that's always, every time you go over to practice, you know, aren't your students sitting there doing homework? And they just self-sustained and say, I just, I need to do some homework today. So they make that choice. Our coaches are very.
I have two questions, but also just want to say thanks to all of you for being here and for putting this together, because it is a very helpful update, and it's exciting to see the work that is happening. So just want to appreciate all of you for taking your Tuesday night to spend with us. I think the first question is probably the quick one, which is just whether there is anything that is happening to support students in taking the AP test after they have taken this human geography class. So I'd love to hear about that.
Yeah, we actually won a grant through the Assistance League, and we were able to buy apps, like a phone app for all the students. And when we went to the AP Institute this summer, it was like a week-long workshop, all the teachers highly recommended this app that helps students prepare for the exam. So we were able to buy applications for all the students interested in the exam, and honestly, I think out of, out of the 260 students in AP Human Geography, I think we have like 230 that want to take the test, so the majority want to take the test.
That's great.
And they're using the apps, they're excited. Seminar is definitely aligning to giving them test prep. And then, Tia, you're working with our counselors, looking at the cost for students that aren't on free and reduced lunch, too. So we're also looking at the cost of that AP exam as well. So for students who do have free and reduced lunch, it's free, and we're looking at the numbers to see, see if we can cover it for them. So, yeah, we're excited about the apps.
Before you ask your next question, does that app exist for other AP classes?
It does, yeah. Not all of them, but a lot of them. Yeah. It's a $5 app. It's a $5 app and it's very aligned from what I hear, so, yeah.
That is good information.
It's called I Score Five.
I Score?
Yep, like the letter I, Score Five. And then I think they have it for, I don't know, US History maybe, there's, I think, a lot of the social sciences, but I would have to look.
So then my second question is about the PLC texts. I don't know if you and or Carrie want to tackle it, but it's, it's so helpful and it's great to see the words that are on this Wordle. Is that what they're called, Wordles, right? And some of them, some of the words are really small, so apologies if I miss this, but I'm kind of surprised that words like diversity or culture or race are not on here, given the diversity of our school. And I think how much we know, that plays a role in learning and in how, you know, students are feeling in their classroom. So can you just speak a little bit to the extent to which conversations about diversity and identity and equity are also being tackled in PLCs?
Great question. The first being, I will confess that this is not a PLC-generated Wordle.
Okay.
Literally scammed from Google. So I should have put the-
Okay. Thank you.
It's not our teachers.
That is an important clarification, given my question.
I know, right? That being said, our school improvement goals are around achievement for Latino-Latina students. So the teachers' PLC goals were directed to align to that work. So we have teachers approaching that in many different ways. One I'll speak to is, we have a special ed PLC that's modified a check-in checkout system with specific Latino males. They're noticing trends that in their data, in their formative data, in their data across the building. And they've implemented a pretty, I'd say, robust check-in checkout system weekly. There's teams that are thinking about, I know specifically about ELA is culturally relevant resources. They're really digging into, this is how I used to teach this unit, how do I bring together resources that speak to my students? So all of this work, I say to, to say the instructional decision-making is coming through the conversations. So when they look at their data and they see that different student groups are performing differently, it's really an interesting then conversation of why do we think that is? And what do we wanna try that's gonna change our data before we hit a summative assessment? The power of PLCs and being in there as teachers process that without a clear answer has been really, a really powerful piece. So I wanna thank the board and for everybody that put together the seventh-period day because the piece of it being embedded is their PD, is their work. So we don't, we don't have to necessarily roll out culturally relevant PD. They're doing the work of finding out what works for kids.
Thank you, I really appreciate hearing more about that.
I wanted to add also, I really appreciate the credit recovery plan and the detail that is included in that. Obviously, that had to be a lot of work to quickly figure out a way to help all of these kids kind of recover that credit and plus that class. Is, the only question I had, is there something in place for the students that are not in any seminars? It says they can complete on their own time, but like some kind of follow-up system to check in with them and make sure that they're-
Yeah, so that's eight students. So Tia and I are gonna be working with the teachers to look at each student's, what they're capable of doing. If they can come before and after school, if there's time within the, you know, somewhere else in the day. And possibly even next semester, like can we put them in a seminar and have them make it up there? So we don't have an answer yet, but we're definitely going to go case by case to find the best solution for each student.
One, one additional question. So I'm looking forward maybe to June, maybe to next fall, when you have another semester's worth of data. I'm expecting you'll be sharing similar observations. Are there other observations that, sort of other outcomes that we wanna monitor that maybe are too soon with just one semester under our belt?
Peter or Director Tenzing, I wanna make sure I understand your question. Are there other outcomes that were not presented here that we want?
This is a read-my-mind question, so if you want me to just say what I'm thinking, I'll feel, I'll go right-
Say what you're thinking.
So, I wanted to make, wanted to make sure that I didn't step on any toes if anybody had something that they wanted to share. But here's what I would like to see.
Okay.
Obviously, in order to understand the outcome of, what you've demonstrated to us with the outcomes of semester one from AP Human Geography is that at this point, we are not falling behind. So in other words, we're not setting any students back by having more students fail. Basically, the performance of students in this advanced course is mirroring fairly closely the performance that we saw in prior years when they were segmented across both advanced and advanced courses. So this is excellent, this is an excellent outcome to say that we're effectively supporting kids to challenge themselves and take more advanced. The other outcome then that is of interest to me is, does this experience in ninth grade succeed in reforming those students' self-image of themselves as, basically the self-image of the student as being able to and wanting to pursue those more rigorous courses? And so I think that's gonna be the piece that we'd like to see specifically pulled out. When we look at our rigorous course enrollment, would be to separate out those sophomores from this matriculating class as they do their enrollments for this next academic year. So hopefully, we'll start to see that uptick in terms of more-
Yep.
-advanced courses throughout. So that was one thing. There was a second thing. And I can't think of it. Oh, well, I mean, obviously, it's gonna be with, with that, with that Latino population. I mean, we obviously see that we're gonna wanna be seeing that, you know, those distributions move so that we're not so racially predictable with which subgroups are succeeding. But obviously, that's, that's the bigger work that is ongoing across all of your efforts.
Across our school.
So, yeah.
Driven by our school improvement plan.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you very much for your attention and your effort.
Thank you all, and I wanna just take the time to say that I may be the principal or the face of Richfield High School, but this work is completely impossible without my fabulous, talented team. I am so grateful to have a team to buy into the vision that has been laid before them. And they work tirelessly to make sure it comes to fruition. And although Teresa did not present, she has been supporting us all along the way around this work as well. And Tia Clayson, oh my goodness, she has been such, such a support, such a support to, to move this work forward. So thank you, Tia, Teresa, Carrie, Dave, and Megan for helping us pull this off this year. Couldn't have done it without my team, so thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So with that, we're also gonna have a brief conversation about surveys. I think Athletic Director Boy has something briefly to share. So in connection to the high school, we also had some questions about athletics. So as we recall, we are two weeks into our student community and staff survey. A couple of the questions on that survey are related to athletics. And we asked our community something that we have been going down the inquiry ladder to see what feelings are about in relation to our conference. So some of our teams are having some struggles overall from a competitive perspective. And so what we wanted to do was take a look at how our community feels about the concept of us examining and possibly changing conferences. And as they are over there working on that-
Trying to figure out where the input button is?
Source.
Does it not like the two computers?
Try in the cabinet below.
Yeah, are you sure?
There's a red button that allows you to switch.
There we go.
So I asked Mr. Boy to take a sneak preview peek at the questions in relation to athletics just to share because I thought it was an important conversation, not for any decisions today, but just to sort of talk about what, what's going on in athletics with relation to a transition. Mr. Boy?
Sure, just like Tri Metro's still very much interested in having us join. I've had many individual conversations with your athletic directors, they're excited about us applying. I've gotten, I continue to get emails checking on our status, making sure that we still wanted. I certainly think we are their preferred addition in there. In terms of our old conference, again, we've been unofficially invited. Again, nothing official because we haven't left and none of those things have taken place. But every one of the athletic directors within the Metro West has, has very much been in support of all of the programs that would not be in the new conference that they would support and we would stay in. So ones like Boye Swimming, Nordic Alpine, synchronized swimming, gymnastics, things that are not in the new conference, we would stay then as a partner member in there. So we would compete in those sports, we would have an opportunity for all conference, conference championships and all of those things. So there would be really no change to those. That will not affect our co-op status in hockey. You know, again, those things can change, but it won't be as a result of the conference change that way. Tri Metro does offer music and fine arts competitions for all the things that we currently compete in. In all honesty, the Metro West is kind of well-known within the metro for having a high number of fine arts activities and competitions. We don't currently compete in many of those. We compete in the three of the eight that they offer, but all the ones that we currently compete in are also offered in the, in the Tri Metro. And so again, to just to look at data here.
So real quick, just to restate, so as we examine our conference and our conference alignment, we were invited to join Tri Metro, and so we've been examining that as an idea. Some of the things we wanted to make sure of, first, timeframe, if we were to join, it would be not this next year, but it would be a year from now. We'd have all the same opportunities that we have now. And if we were to transition into that conference, the Metro West where we are currently in would maintain us in all of the sports that we're in. And then also the additional fine arts and extracurriculars match for the things that we're in. And so then Dave's gonna share briefly, we, we are currently slightly over 700. I believe we have 707 survey responses, which is good. We have landed anywhere between 400 and 800 over the last four years. So we are pushing to try to get to the 800 survey response. But here's where we sit at 700, at least with relation to athletics. Mr. Boy?
Yeah, so a quick snapshot again from that data. The first one is staff results, and so you can see 189 responses, 91.5 were in support of the change. And again, I think, a simple question, you know, again, as we talked about last time, I think you can certainly make it much more complex. But I, I think in terms of staff and seeing the results and seeing how kids want to participate and what drives and motivates them to participate, very much in favor of the move. In terms of, from the community, in the English side, 83.1 compared to 16.9 in favor of moving, of the 384 responses. And then 91.5 from the community in terms of the Spanish-speaking people that took it. So again, right now, so far, very much in terms of in favor of moving from the community, so. Questions?
So and then just to summarize, so obviously, some pretty overwhelming input in regards to our community. So as we continue to investigate, obviously, there is community support and staff support at this time for looking in that direction. And so obviously, opening things up to the board for questions. But I would be indicating as the superintendent for Mr. Boy to continue investigating down this road. Prior to, we would have to make a final decision basically by the end of spring to determine if we were wanting to transition conferences for the 1920 school year.
The, yeah, and the sooner the better, you know, that's the reality for the conference that we're going into. Again, they're getting anxious as well. And know that if, if, if we're not willing, they may have to start looking for somebody else to kind of fill that spot. And then, and then honestly, to be respectful to our old conference in terms of letting them know if that change is coming. We, the, I think it's not till October of next year in terms of giving them. But I, we've been talking about it all the whole time, so they've been updated. And obviously, they would like to know what's going on in terms of our decision and how that's gonna affect things in the conference downward. So I think for both conferences, the sooner we can make that decision, the better. But obviously, we wanna make a, make a good decision based on all the input that we have.
So we're getting more, we have more survey results that you're kind of waiting on, although it looks like mathematically, unless there's some really amazing bolus of folks out there who wanna give an opinion, it's not likely to push us into a result. So having said that, what other information or what do you think you need in order to make a decision? So this would be both sort of a, do you need more information and data in order to inform a decision? Or is, is there process-related stuff that you need? Whether it be administrative action or board action, et cetera?
I'm obvious, I'm, I'm ready to make the move, you know, in terms of me, Steve and I, I do wanna, you know, and I'll be honest, I told the coaches that. And I, and I tried, you know, and I did for the most part just to try to stay neutral, and this is where we're at. But the coaches, again, the only coaches that have been against it are the ones that would stay in the Metro West. For example, you've got Nordic and Alpine where, again, for the reason of, I don't wanna go to a conference that doesn't support my program, that doesn't make any sense. And so I expect that they would be against that, you know. Girls' swimming is really the one program that, I know Coach Hammer's not a fan of moving to the next conference in terms of facilities, in terms of competition within there. He's really the only one in terms of all of our sports that would, would be moving kind of begrudgingly. There's a few that are neutral, that have said if we go, it's fine. It really doesn't see it being a big change to them. But the majority of those sports outside of that group have been in favor of going. So even sports that have said this wouldn't necessarily be the best for my sport, but they see the big picture, that this is the best for all of our kids in terms of that. So like I said, what do I need? I kind of feel like I'm, I'm ready to go. I'm not sure if Steve's there yet, but we'll have that conversation. That way, but in terms of the next steps then, would be the application to the other conference. And so it's a joint application both from us and from the secretary of the new conference. And it's simply a, well, two sides, so it's about an eight-page document in terms of really presenting, here's what sports we have, all the information that we've collected already. Looking at what sports do we offer, what sports do they have? What's our rationale for wanting to go? What are the advantages, what are the disadvantages go? And then in terms of signatures, it's superintendent, it's athletic director, and the board, designated member from the board, which I think is, I think is Mr. Paulus on the, you're on, you're on the high school league website, so you're official.
All right.
So I said, I don't think board action is officially required, but obviously, you know. So-
Can you just, can you just refresh for us the, the reasons it's a better fit? Just, just to repeat, I mean, I, I think it's relative school size, more proximity-
Yeah, when you talk about in terms of school population, in terms of demographics, in terms of free and reduced status, in terms of number of programs offered, programs, programs having the same struggles that we are, you know, in terms of certain sports and numbers and having a better fit that way. Those are the big pieces. We looked at, I think last time we looked at start time or end times. This, the new conference gets out later, so in terms of those. But we also talked about traffic in terms of traveling north compared to traveling south. So probably a wash in terms of, you know, is it going to be a big change in terms of early releases? No. But the reality is that the biggest reason for the change is to try to be more competitive with the result that we're gonna be able to attract more kids. That kids are, kids are attracted to, you know, yes, we, we wanna win and we understand there's other things involved in high school sports, but a part of the kids and wanting to be a part of things is wanna be a part of something that has success that they're going to, you know, garner pride for, they're gonna be that way. So I, I think that, and talking to other schools, again, St. Louis Park and our old conference went through this, you know, and for the same reasons, and talked about, you know, what did it matter? You know, did it, you know, we hope? And his answer was absolutely yes. You know, he said, because you're doing, you're going through what we were, you're kind of in that same boat. They've had a big resurgence, their athletic programs have gone over- Their athletic programs have gone overall have been much better than they were. They were in the old league conference for a number of years and were at the bottom. And it just, in terms of the psyche and the mentality of the athletic program, it was a shift for them. And leaving, finding a conference that was more like where they were helped get kids back out into programs and things grow. And they're in a good spot right now, so.
You'd mentioned a couple of the folks who don't support it and they've given their rationale. And in some part, there is, how much, so if it's roughly 10% that's not, that's not in favor of it at this point, from that 10%, how many are from the sports that will, would remain in the same conference, would, you know, would remain in the Metro West anyway?
How many?
Like, so, you know, there's roughly 10% not supporting it. But you said some of it is from sports.
Most, like I said, most of the ones other than girls' swimming that actually would be making the move, those are, you know, the resistance to the change are all programs that, and again, the first time I took, we took that survey, it was not knowing exactly what does this look like for a program like Nordic. You know, there are some, there are some conglomerates out there of schools that have programs that don't have a conference and they set up competitions. So we looked at, all right, what does that look like? Can we get into those? But in having that conversation with the Metro West, they're not looking to add anybody if we leave. So the reality is all of those programs, we are, we are supporting their, what they're doing as well. And so they love to have us in there. We've got, and again, that's credit to our kids, our coaches, our facilities in some case, they like having us around. And so they're not looking to add anyone else. They would love to have us continue to be in there that way, so.
Thanks.
Just to make sure I've got this right in my head from our previous conversation, football does not apply to any of this because it's a totally separate part.
Yeah, and this, this football is separate. That scheduling is done through district. No update from the high school league in terms of changes, possible changes for next year. The decision next to the spring, they will have the decision for the year after, for 1920. That districting will get done by the end of this school year.
Yeah. Just, just so, sorry, this is tangential, but just so I can communicate potentially to the parents in the community who might be of interest, what sort of timeline, because I know that there's an interest in the community of sort of making an expression of their feeling of support for some adjustment, what sort of timeline should we be relating to those parents if they want to be relevant?
In terms of football?
Yeah.
Making the changes? I would say it's as soon as possible.
Got it.
Because if they're going to make changes, and again, I'll call the league again, last time I checked, they were ready to do anything and hadn't done anything yet. But if they're going to make changes for next year's schedule, I'm, again, they weren't able to give me any timeline.
Right.
Because this is not a regular change.
Right.
If they're going to do that, I assume that's going to be done very soon. And so if we really want to look at, and they're aware, we've already had that conversation then.
Yeah.
With the people at the high school. So it's not new to them, but in terms of kind of expanding that voice from the community, that piece will get done. The other thing they do is there's a survey in terms of football. So you'll have the opportunity to tell the high school league what you would like to do. So in terms of some of those things, information from that letter would also be relevant in that survey for the year after. So I think, like I said, the sooner the better on both of those. So we're ready to go and they have that information.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now you get to hit one of those buttons.
Do you have to plug that in anywhere? Was it plugged in?
No, there you go.
Okay. All right. I am Teresa Rosen, Assistant Principal at Richfield High School. And I am here speaking on behalf of the whole district though, to present to you some information about the Minnesota Student Survey. And so this is an overwhelming amount of data. Some of you are nodding your heads, you are maybe familiar with this student survey. So, so I'm going to give you a snapshot of it, and I actually do have the data for you to take with you, but I'm first going to give you a little teaser with it. And so I'm going to ask that you play along with me a little bit tonight because I'm a teacher first and foremost. And so first I'm going to give you the facts. So this particular survey was given last October, the last time we gave it was October of 2015. It is a survey that is given every three years. So, and we have been doing this for as long as I've been here. So we've been doing it for a very long time. It's given by the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota Department of Health. Together they combine on it and all schools take this survey. It is repeated every three years and it is given to students in grades five, eight, nine, and 11. So if you think about that, every three years, that fifth grader is going to repeat it again in eighth grade and then repeat it again in 11th grade. So they shifted that though recently. If you wanted to go back more than nine years, they actually did use to give it to six, nine, and 12. And I think what they found out is they were giving it in the spring of the 12th grade year and those were young adults and the data was just, I think they wanted to really study what matters to schools. So they shifted it so we're, the comparisons now are happening in the last nine years. But we can go back to the data from 2015 and we can compare it to the data from three years before and look at what are those fifth graders saying now as eighth graders, what are those eighth graders saying now as juniors? What is our school, what does our district look like? Are we making progress in one direction or another? So it's a very, very interesting survey with lots and lots of information. It does take a very long time to get the results. So you're saying, well, gosh, if we gave it in October of 2015, which they call the 2016 school year, we gave it in the fall because we did it electronically. Some school districts give it by paper copy and some of those were given in the spring and then they have to compile all the data. And so it takes a long time for us to get that data back. So we've only had the data for about a year. So, but it does allow us to compare Richfield High School to Minnesota as well. And so we can take a look at our school and compare it to the state of Minnesota. So, so I'm going to give you a few sample questions. These questions that are asked, and there are hundreds of them. It takes the students about 45 minutes to take the survey. And we do do it online, but it is a long survey. They do have the option to opt out and we do get permission to give the survey. The questions that are asked of fifth graders, as you see when you get the data, are a little different. So what you see here, I am giving you just Richfield High School questions and Richfield High School data. So, so the first question is that I picked here is, since the beginning of the school year, how many times have you changed schools? That is a question that is asked of them. All right? So I want you to turn to the person next to you and I want you to guess what percent of Richfield students responded zero?
And they took this in October, right?
They took this in October of 2015. And it says, since the beginning of this school year, how many times have you changed schools? And what percent of Richfield students responded zero? So it means that they are stable since October to, since the beginning of school year to October, they are stable. And how does this compare to the state? So just talk to the person next to you, quick, 30 seconds. Take a guess.
Five percent.
First of all, do you guess that we are more transient than the state?
More transient, yes.
More transient?
Yes.
Here's our numbers. The percent of students who have not changed schools during the school year in Richfield, ninth grade it was 88% and 11th grade 91%. So we do see that our older students are more stable, but in the state of Minnesota, look at that data. So what does that tell us as educators? It informs us that we must be prepared for transient students, that we have to make this a welcoming place and that we need to find ways to bring them in and help them make those transitions. So that's how it informs us as educators. All right? Okay, so my second question, I'm actually going to ask you to get up and move. You've been sitting a while. So we're going to make that brain work here. And so the question is, I feel safe in my neighborhood. And another question is, I feel safe in my school. So what percent of Richfield students responded agree or strongly agree? And how does this compare to the state? All right? So I am going to ask you, if you believe that we were higher than the state, I want you to walk over to that side of the room. If you believe we were the same as the state, you can stand in the middle of that side, all of you, all of you. And if you think that we were lower than the state, that, that kids feel less safe in Richfield than across the state on the percentages, you're going to stand on this side. Does that make sense? So here's our continuum. So get up and go. Take a guess. Where do you think we land? We feel better than the state, the same as the state in the middle, or we feel worse than the state?
I'm staying in the same.
I'm basically just going to stay right where I'm standing.
I'm staying in the same.
You're in the middle here? Okay, got some middle, got we're a little better, not as good. All right, here we go. I feel safe in my neighborhood. Richfield, 95% strongly agree or agree, and Minnesota says 96. So really, we're pretty much the same. I feel safe in my school, exactly the same. This is good news for us as educators. Now, it's not great that they don't feel safe all the time. But, and of course, it depends on when you take the survey. If you take it today after the big tragedies in Florida, you just never know what you're going to get for data. So, so it does make a difference, but, all right. So we're going to do another one on the sides of the room. Stay standing. Sorry, I've got one more. You're going to have to walk around a little bit. At my school, teachers care about students. What percent of Richfield ninth grade students responded agree or strongly agree? And how does this compare to the state? So if you believe that we were higher than the state, you're going to go to this corner over on that side. If you believe we're in the middle, or do you believe that we are less caring at Richfield High School than most places? Where do you think we fall? Wow, you have a lot of faith in us people.
The same.
Wow.
Same.
All right, are you ready? John's, I know John's making his way over to that far side, aren't you, John? I know, we know you're going there. Okay. All right, here we go. At my school, teachers care about students. 93% of our students say that they agree or strongly. We need to give ourselves a round of applause for that one. 87%. 87%. So if Richfield's scoring 93, think of what some schools are getting as their feedback here. Crazy, isn't it? Yeah. All right. So you can go back to your seats now. I got you up moving around. All right, here's another question. The questions range, you would not believe. They ask questions about what you do after school and they ask you questions about what you eat. And there's, there's things that the nurse would want to know and there's, there's questions directly related to the SRO. And there is questions that are related to churches and to community ed. And so this is a 60, well, 58-page document. And I don't know how many questions there are, but there's hundreds, hundreds of them. Okay? So, and I'm going to give you a copy in a minute because we're going to do a little research of our own. But I have one more question, or two more questions, I think, here for you. So have any of your parents or guardians ever been jailed or prison, in jail or prison? What percent of Richfield students responded yes? I wanted you to do a partner share again. Talk to the person next to you and guess what percent of Richfield students responded yes? And how does this compare to the state? In a minute, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand, but just take a guess and talk to the person next to you. I want you to raise your hand if you believe that more than 5% of the Richfield students responded yes, that their parents or guardians have been in jail or prison. Raise your hand high if you think it's more than 5%. Raise your hand. Okay, I want you to keep your hand up if you believe it's more than 10%. I want you to keep your hand up if you believe it's more than 15%.
He thought it was 15%.
He thought it was 15. Look at this. And in the state of Minnesota, it's 17%. What does this tell us about trauma? And fear? That we're dealing with in our schools for our kids? This is important information for us to have. So what I just want to share with you, why I'm here today and what we do with this data, when we get this data back at Richfield High School, I oversee the student assistance committee. And so there is so much data that what we did is we took chunks of it. We took like three pages of the data and on every Friday morning, we have a meeting and we would spend about 15 minutes of time diving into just three pages of data to talk about what do we see, what do we need to know, and how does it inform our work? So that's how we use this data when we first got it. And so because I'm into the data, they just said, can I come and present some of the data to you? But this was one, I just remember, we had a lot of discussion about at our student support services committee meeting because this says a lot about the kinds of things that we sometimes have to see in our school. All right. Another one, during the last 30 days, have you had to skip meals because your family did not have enough money to buy food? What percent of Richfields responded, students responded yes? And does this, how does this compare to the state? I'll share this one with you right away. It's 8% at Richfield and 5% in the state of Minnesota. That's high. That's high for the whole state of Minnesota, I think. When we think about this number of children, in the last 30 days, we're not talking about in the last year, in the last 30 days, 8% of our students are saying that they had to skip meals because they did not have food on their table. And we are doing things about that. We are, we have a food shelf and we are serving our kids and we are trying to do things to help them. So, but it does show directly the need. All right. And so I'm going to give you one more that we're going to take a guess on while I hand out the data. I want you to think about this. During the last 30 days, how many days did you use tobacco products, alcohol, and marijuana? And I only use the data for 11th grade, okay? So what percent of Richfield 11th grade students responded zero days? So I'm looking at the positive now. How many of our kids said, nope, I did not use tobacco products in the last 30 days? What is that percent? Okay? And I've got a little chart and I'm actually going to hand you one out because I want you, so start thinking about it, think about your numbers, and I'm going to come, give you a chart as well as the data. And so fill in your chart with your numbers. Okay? And then, this is like an exit ticket, I guess. That's what teachers call it when you got the end of our, so be thinking about what you're going to fill in for your data. What do you think Richfield's stats are in this one? And I'm going to, I'm going to call on a couple of you to give me your stats and see how we do. Okay. I'll ask for volunteers on the first one, so then I might just call them.
What's that? You're cheating.
Right? Now, don't look at the data yet. Don't look at the data. Come on, don't open that. See, you know why, that's why I didn't hand it out before. I said, I said to Beth, I said, you can't give this to them ahead of time. So they got to see this. You got to have the teasers first. You got to have the teasers. All right, so I'll take a volunteer. Who wants to take a guess at Richfield's percentage of tobacco use in Minnesota's? Last 30 days, what number of 11th grade 17-year-olds? Anybody want to take a guess? I'll call on somebody.
21%.
21%. For Richfield?
Yeah.
Do you think we're higher or lower than the state?
Same.
Same? We are better than the state for tobacco. And it's only 90, it's for 95% of our kids. Now, I will tell you, this is a little bit before the dawn of vaping, okay? My personal opinion would be right now, if, I'm sure the new survey will include a vaping, wouldn't we say that, Carrie? In what we see at school, you know, that this is a new trend with teenagers. But this is positive. Only 5% say, during the last 90 days, how many days did you use? 11 responding zero. So they're saying zero days. So 95% of the kids say, I don't use any tobacco products. And we're better than the state. Okay? So how about alcohol? Tim, you wanna take a guess at that one? What do you think?
Oh, boy. I will say 80%.
80%. You think we're better than the state or less?
I think we're better.
You think we're better?
10%.
We are slightly better. And you're not up far off. 77% for Richfield, 75%. So in the last 30 days, they're saying 77% of our kids are saying they didn't use alcohol. This is a really important stat to, 'cause you know how people will say, everybody's doing it? Nope. Nope. Not everybody's doing it, people. This, and this is, and this is an anonymous survey. So it's good data. All right. Who wants to take a stab at marijuana? Christine, you wanna give it a shot?
Well, I'm such an eternal optimist. I have to think it's closer to tobacco, like 94. And I think we're better than the state.
Okay. We're not quite that good. But we are better than the state and 86. So it is better than alcohol, but not quite as good as tobacco. So, and we are better than the state. What?
Marijuana, I don't know if that's significant, but is obviously more prevalent than tobacco.
Yes. Yes, it is. Mm-hmm. We would tell you that in our work with teenagers. They, they hear all the news that tobacco's killing them. And they hear all the news that marijuana should be legalized. And it's a battle. And this, this...
But it's medicinal, too.
And it's medicinal. Yes. I mean, they hear this stuff. So we are really struggling with the value system around marijuana for our teenagers. And sometimes the people they ride in the car with to school. So when they come in smelling marijuana, it's not always 'cause of them. So, yeah. So, all right. Now, you get to look at your packets. So it's your turn to look at the charts. Let's look at that concerning topic of bullying. This is because this is a current topic for us right now. It's a concern. This data, remember, is two years old. But if you look at pages 11 and 14, and the reason I wanna have you practice that one is, is because you wanna take both, both books. And you can compare the state to Minnesota, the state of Minnesota to Richfield. Does that make sense? All right. So take a look at it. And let's come up with, in your head, come up with one item of good news and one item of bad news. Okay? And then I'll ask you to share out. But I'm gonna give you two minutes. And this is my final slide. So just to kinda let you see what this data looks like we're practicing with this one. And I'll be quiet for a minute and a half. Okay. Time is up. Do I have anybody who's willing to share some concerning news that they see in this bullying, in these three pages on, in regards to bullying? Or anything surprising or shocking to them?
I just really focused on, you know, 11th grade and just flipped through because there's so much in here that you can't do a full stand. But for 11th grade, we certainly have more students who are reporting that they have been bullied for race, ethnicity, or national origin reasons than the state overall.
Yes. Yes, that is true. Now, you do also have to understand, we are much more diverse. So, but yes, that is a concern. Anybody else find some concerning or shocking, something they'd like to share in regards to this?
The rates of cyberbullying seem to run generally higher than bullying that would be more face-to-face, I guess.
Face-to-face, yes. That cyberbullying is definitely something that is happening at a higher rate. Do I have one more statement of concern or shocking news to you Would anybody like to share a glimmer of good news I just knew this would happen. That's why I didn't give you those books ahead of time. All right. I will, I will just close up by saying, you now have the data in front of you. And it really, it's fascinating. And the topics are fascinating. I think that it's valuable information for us to keep in mind. It certainly has pertinent pieces of information to differing pieces. And those of us who work with students, it's helpful for us to know, but there's other uses for it as well. And it's kind of, it's interesting. So I wanted to give you both pieces of it. The Minnesota student survey data is available online. You can just Google it, and anybody can see that. The district results are only available through us. So they don't publish those district by district.
So because this was taken in 2015 for the 2016 school year, did they take it a second time and the data is not back? Or are they taking it soon?
No, they take it, they'll take it next year in October again. So we'll take it in 2018, October of 2018. So we'll be doing this survey again. And then we won't have the results, though. We won't have the results by the end of the school year next year. It will be into the next year before we have the results. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So thank you for bringing this. I mean, I always find this a fascinating set of information.
Yeah, you probably have, yeah.
But, so do we, I have a couple of questions. Do we look back and compare this then to our district three years ago? So what do...
Yeah. I have to say, the results that we got three years ago actually put them together for us. So that was kinda nice. It was easier to see. Now we have to do what you're doing now, is we have to take the book from 2013 and 2016 and lay them next to each other and compare. And so it is something that we did have at, like, on those Friday morning meetings, we would say, well, what, are we getting better or are we getting worse? And we would kinda go back and look at it. But as you can see, it's so overwhelming. It's hard to, to, you know, like, it's great. I actually have given some of the data to some of the students in their stats class, in Matt Mullinbach's stats class, and just given them segments. And then they can do the whole cross-section of like three years' study and all the different grades and, yeah. I, in fact, just to put this together, I had to take averages of all the percentages of 9th boys, 9th girls, 9th, 11th girls, 11th boys to give you some kind of like compilation. Yeah, it's overwhelming.
So one of the things that you said that really kind of resonated with me was the comment about how we can use this data to understand what our students are experiencing. And you talked about how we can use that to better serve the students of our district. So I would be really interested to hear, you know, how we are using it. And do we have a systematic way to look at that? And do we make changes in what we do in our classrooms and in our buildings based on this data?
Yeah. At this point at the high school, I can just say that it's mostly with the support services people. And, you know, we talk about it with, I will say, with the 2013 data. We took a, this is when Stephen West was here. It just happened to be. And we had a staff development day. And we did incorporate it with all staff and gave them a lot of the data. And so we have done that. But it's, it's an ongoing process. So I can't say we're as good as that as we'd like to be, probably.
And is it, I think this is available in electronic form, too.
Yes, it is.
That might be nice.
Yep. I will make sure that Beth has that to send out to you.
This will be obviously a very far-in-the-future agenda item. But I would like to, you know, in May 2019, you know, look at this when, when it is released. And to be able to look at those, those changes, you know, and maybe try to isolate what are the places where we've seen the biggest changes from May 2016 to May 2019. And then I think from that, have some of this conversation that, you know, we're talking about here. What does that really mean for us as a community? What does it mean for us as a district in terms of our priorities and resources for our kids? So I am excited to continue to use this as a resource for us in our decision-making and how we support you all in your direct work with kids every day.
Thank you for that.
The other thing that's on my mind is you may not have had a chance to look at this. But it would be interesting to see if we're getting any common themes that are emerging between the Reimagine work and the student survey. Just to see if there's, if there's areas of overlap there that can kinda help to set priorities and see where we're gonna put our energy and focus.
We have not had that chance really to do that yet, to compare those two.
Yeah.
This is, unfortunately, sometimes this is one of those things that you, it's in front of you, and then it gets put away. I mean, it's, yeah.
Are we allowed to pick and choose and release any of this information to the public?
That's, that's a question for Steve.
I believe it's a public data survey. I would need to go back and check.
I can't answer that. The Minnesota student survey is public. The district owns their own results. We do share it with some of our grant funders. There are different people who do get some of that information from us. I do know that. But I do know initially that was one of the concerns, was that it, you know, we just can't go out there and share it. You know, like inappropriately. We don't want people to use it against us. We want people to use it for us. And it's great to be able to use the data to say, hey, this is a great place. Kids think they're really cared for by their teachers. And, and, you know, so they feel very cared for. And that's a positive thing. But, you know, you...
Well, that's what I'm saying. We cannot use that to...
I, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It's probably the district's decision as to what gets used or shared. But I don't know that.
I'm gonna have to go double-check, like, state policy in regard to this data and what is private and what is not. And I can certainly report that to, back to the board at the next meeting. Most, most data of this nature does tend to be public. But I would have to double-check.
I mean, considering the recent events and the image that people have of school, this, this might help.
One question. I didn't notice a lot of body image bullying, almost sometimes reaching 20%, which is really...
That's a concern.
...a number. And I think for a lot of people, that might not be considered bullying. Because when you think of bullying, sometimes we think about aggression and not really, you know, not necessarily be made fun of. So I'm just curious to know, when you see some big patterns like that, is there some sort of additional intervention that happens to try to solve it? Because this is a question for 30 days. You know, it's really just like, you know, think over last month. And, you know, you've been here five days of the week and...
That means in their 20 days of being here.
Right.
Right. Right. Yeah. And I can't say that we have done, and broken it down by each of the different categories for bullying.
So I think as we think about what we're going to do, 'cause I acknowledge that, you know, bullying is not a Richfield-specific issue by an means, right?
Right.
But if we can use this data to kinda break up, you know, we, you know... I'm thinking of like when teachers need some information, you know, we get PD on something like once a week. And I just don't know, not being a high school teacher or anything near, if there's like assembly opportunities for things. I mean, I don't know how some things are not cool enough anymore in high school. But maybe they should be. Because these are ways of, you know, reinforcing themes and having it being fresh in students' minds. And to know that adults are paying attention and how hurtful it could be. Because you may think that you're just joking. Or you may just be saying it because that's what people at home speak like. Or, you know, when you go shopping. I don't know. But...
But yeah, educating them about all those different types and how hurtful and it makes people feel.
Right. So you know, we noticed, you know, this came about. And, I mean, I appreciate that the, you know, racial discrimination is not, you know, compared to this. But this is still a big deal, you know?
Very big deal. Right. If it, sometimes that's the thing about the data. It's kinda like the marijuana numbers. And we can feel glad that we're better than the state, but we're still got a problem. Or bullying. We can say, well, we're just like everybody else. But that's not a good thing. It's, right. It's how do we make us better?
So I don't know if assemblies are cool enough for high school.
Well, we've been doing a lot through...
They're kinda cute and elementary.
We, we do some things during our advisory sessions. Like we have some bullying, we have two different bullying lessons and ones about being that bystander and not, and choosing not to be the bystander, but to take action. And so it's advocating for people to not just be like, oh, it doesn't happen to me. But it's like, what can you do to take action? And then we have another one that's focused on kind of cyberbullying and how the different kinds of things can be hurtful. And actually, kids are pretty responsive to those.
One other thing I was just thinking after, John, what you raised, and Steve, you know, saying that you'll look at, you know, what information is public. I think also being really mindful of what it is that we say to our students in this district when they take this, in terms of how it will be used. Because I, even if the, the information is public, I think we should just make sure we're being cognizant of what it is that we say to the students, that this is for, and how it would or would not be used. So I just wanna, that, that came to me as we were sort of having that conversation. Just wanted to make sure I said that out loud.
I think there's obviously a lot to think about in terms of the data. And as I'm skimming through it myself and looking across, obviously, we wanna be in a district where we see 100% in the never category in terms of bullying and in terms of those types of behaviors. And thinking about what do we do proactively And thinking about what do we do proactively at all levels of our organization for all of our students to make sure they have the most safe, supportive, and effective environment. Looking, looking across at the tables, you know, I'm noticing a pattern that actually does not increase in bullying as it gets older, it actually stays very similar in a times goes down, as, as kids get older in our organization. And thinking about, we can't make this just a conversation about high school, and how do we make sure that high school is our most safe, effective place? But we really need to make sure that we, you know, as you think about the words from our students in Reimagine Richfield, and some of the things our parents have shared, and what our staff has shared, really looking about social, emotional behavior systems and supports across our entire organization to really continue to improve the environment and culture for all of our kids, regardless of the school, regardless of the grade, regardless of any other differences that our kids might have, making sure that everybody has the most successful experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, yes, we are still rolling. We're going to turn to Mr. Holgi for a brief conversation as we are looking to move forward
with our capital bonds, and as we're considering how to most effectively manage that money. And Mr. Holgi and the finance team have been examining that closely. So, Mr. Holgi, just a brief sharing of information.
Yeah, and I can't believe I have to follow that conversation, because that was a good deep dive into information, and then I want to provide just a quick overview. Actually, I'm going to talk about two items as far as a construction update. One, as Superintendent Janowski said, we've been looking at our investment advisors and options around that, when we look at investing our bond funds. And then, secondly, an update on our professional service agreements moving forward with the construction project. I'm going to kick into that one first. I anticipate that we'll be bringing some additional information to the next board meeting regarding a contract with architects, with a recommendation to move forward with Wold Architects. We did an RFP back when we started the facility study, they were the architect that emerged at the top of the list for working in that project. And we've been engaging in work with ICS as far as negotiating that contract specifically with Wold, looking at other comparisons, and really have kind of found that Wold ends up being very much in the middle for price points and things like that. They've been engaged in the work with the facility studying of participating in those areas, and we're in the process of negotiating exact components tied in with that. They are very specific and have the same fee that they pay, or that they charge based on the scope of project across all school districts. So they recently have completed a project in Edina. They know that their reputation exists within all school districts, and so, negotiating different deals, so to speak, with different school districts is not something that they do. However, they look at what's the scope of the project, and they have different fees for services, whether it's a new construction project, whether it's a remodel project, whether it's straight maintenance projects and things like that. And the professional services agreements that we're setting up are ones that can be terminated at any time, and the implementation of each one of those projects is project-specific. So a high school project will have a specific fee schedule that's tied in with that, with retainers and things like that. Based on feedback from some previous agreements, we also are in the process of negotiating reimbursables up to a maximum. So with architectural fees, making sure that we have some of those controllable costs. We believe we have good services in place as far as monitoring that, working with ICS to make sure that they are still sitting within the budgets, and all of the fees that we're negotiating are within what the budgets were for the original scope of project in that area. With ICS as an owner's rep, we have the opportunity to make sure that we are investing our resources and have the right people doing the right job. So when we're looking at furniture expenses or mechanical expenses and things like that, there are things that we want to definitely work through the architect, and there are things that we want to kind of house outside of that, because we are able to get a similar value, or a similar end product for a reduced value and things like that with how those places are in place. So, that's one of the things that we're working for in finalizing that agreement. The second piece that we're looking at is, when we have $118 million in bonds, it's amazing to find out there are different strategies for how those bonds are invested, what the fee structures are for those, and so we actually sent out a request for proposals tied in with gathering some additional information as far as how different partners would, or investment advisors, would be investing those funds, making sure that we have full disclosure of any issues with those investment advisors, as well as who would be working on our project. We received that. Director of Finance, Jim Gilligan, and I conducted interviews with two partners. Both are partners that we are engaged in different work. One is our existing investment advisors for our OPEB funds, also have been our investment advisors for some of our alternative facilities bonds as well. And then also, just manage our day-to-day cash flow and investments with the funds that we have available. And the other is another provider, both of them are very active in Minnesota school districts, have a couple different strategies. One is an asset management fee structure, one is a transaction...